Monday, June 2, 2025, 6:30 PM, Dudley Municipal Complex, Room 321A. This meeting is being recorded. First, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's standers, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Sir.
People may have noticed we're in different seats tonight. In recognition of Mr. Landry's final meeting, he's not running for reelection. The Board has graciously asked him to run the meeting. As the Chair, I'd like to thank Mr. Landry for his term, for being on Boards before that, for all he does in the community with the veterans. Mark was a tremendous asset serving on the Board. He'd be sorely missed. So at this time, we'll let Mr. Landry run the meeting as the Chairman tonight. We'd also like to take a moment to recognize the loss of Paul Joseph, speak on behalf of the Board and the Town, send our sympathies to Paul's family. Paul was a tireless advocate for the Town of Dudley. I'm probably going to miss some of the things he was on, the Police Evaluating Committee, Selectmen. He served on various subcommittees of the Selectmen. He and I served on multiple contract negotiations. Those of us that go to Town Meeting remember the night Paul stepped up to be the intra-moderator, and the meeting went on, as those meetings have a want-to-do. And Paul stayed up there at basically a risk of his own health. I think the Fire Chief can vouch for that. We all kind of had to give him a cavalcade to make sure he made it home. One thing about Paul, you always knew where you stood. And to quote, number one, don't always agree with you, but we do agree, we're seldom wrong. I'm going to miss Paul. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So right now, I'd like to go to the second item on the agenda, approval minutes for 414, 428, 555, 192025. Do we have those ready?
Mr. Chair, so we are ready with the 519 minutes, but everything else, if we could pass over to the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Without objection, pass over the 414, 428, 555 to the next meeting. And we'll wait for a motion for 51925.
Motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Got a motion, we got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Tonight, we're going to move right now for the third item on the agenda, 4B to number three, Government Study Committee.
We have to call somebody, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Wait for that person to be called in. Mr. Becker, how are you? It's Mark Landry, Board of Selectmen.
Mark, how are you?
Outstanding. Thank you for joining us tonight.
You're very welcome.
Oh, good. We're going to start off with the Government Study Committee section at this point. Did you want to make that agenda item at court?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, so are you just looking for a motion?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following seven, seven people as full members to the Government Study Committee with a term to expire 63026. Randy Becker.
Guyaski.
Guyaski, thank you. Keith Guyaski, Paul Kahn, Brian LeBrecq, Richard LaFond, Cheryl Lito, Rich Matthew.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have discussion?
There's two more names.
It's a separate motion.
They're going to be alternates.
They're going to be alternates.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to vote no on this, and it's not because of, it's simply because I think this should just be Dudley residents. That's my opinion. I agree with, I mean, Mr. Guyaski, I've known you since we were young here, yeah, and Paul. It's simply that, I just believe this should be Dudley residents. That's all. And I respect all of your votes, and I hope you'll respect mine. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say, first off, we had nine people come forward. We had it postponed for two months, and we thanked the people that came forward. And second, my understanding when I spoke to the DLS people, when I had my interview with them, and we discussed this specific committee, they were okay with if it wasn't all residents. Because I was like Kerry, I was a little apprehensive in, I think, having a majority of residents, but the, what was the, I can't think of the name, Ordway, DLS? Ms. Ordway indicated that it was also important not just to have residents, but get it right. And that's why I think the language was so set up that we did have the ability to go outside. So again, we have a majority of Dudley residents, nine people came forward, seven are going to be members, the two alternates are hopefully going to make every meeting, they'll be able to participate if somebody drops out. And again, I see the hesitancy, but I'm comfortable with the motion that we made.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Abstained? So voted.
Four to one, three to two.
That's four to one, sir. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we hand out Fares, Robin Pyko as alternates to the Government Study Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Abstained? Okay, four to one, so voted.
Anybody want to speak that's here?
Anybody else want to speak that's here?
Maybe just got voted on.
Maybe one of the members that just got voted.
Introduce themselves.
Just introduce yourself real quick, and then we'll look at getting you sworn in.
My name's Richard LaFond, I'm the Town Administrator.
Just come up to the mic, that'd be great. We're not forgetting you either, Mr. Becker.
Yes, my name is Richard LaFond, I'm the Town Administrator next door in Webster. And I've been in this business for about 33 years. I've worked in multiple forms of government, from that, similar to Dudley, to town manager forms of government. So I think I've seen a lot, I've seen some of the good, some of the bad, some of the ugly, and hopefully it can be, my experience can be of some assistance. As you know, I don't live here, but I think I can be of some help. But I certainly appreciate the sentiment in terms of residents versus non-residents.
Thank you.
My name's Keith Guyaski, I'm the Assistant Vice President for Finance for Easter Seals of Massachusetts. So we're a statewide nonprofit. I've been in nonprofit accounting for just over 20 years. I was in manufacturing before that, so I hope to bring some of that experience and help out the Town.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name's Rich Matthew. I've been in municipal finance for 23 years directly, four years in the private sector, servicing municipal finance, and was Business Manager at Dudley Charlton for nine years. Worked with you all to some degree over the past decade or so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rich.
Good evening, everyone. Paul Konyatchna, hopefully I bring a unique voice to this committee. As a lifelong resident of the community, I've seen things that work, I've seen things that don't work, and I've seen things that I have questions on. I've also spent a career working for the community, retiring back in October as a Deputy Fire Chief here in Town, so hopefully I have good vision for the community. And thank you for the appointment.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
I'm Hannah Fares, I'm a Process Improvement Specialist and a Project Manager for National Grid. I do construction. I thought I had a unique perspective, and I actually live in Webster, but I'm interested.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
Hey, everyone, I'm Robin Forcall, and I'm the Dean of the Graduate School over at Nichols College. And I have, my PhD is in organizational systems. I have not worked in government at all, I grew up in corporate, but I feel like I bring, with my background, I bring an understanding of organizational systems. From a theoretical perspective, I also have a corporate background, so I understand what organizations look like. So I'm really excited to bring a different perspective to the table, and a lifelong resident of Dudley, so, or longtime resident, not lifelong, but longtime resident.
Super, thank you very much.
Hi, Cheryl Lito, 38 West Dudley Road, Dudley, eight-year resident. And I'm just looking to bring some transparency, some honesty, and attention to detail to whatever the assignment is. Thank you.
Beautiful, thank you very much. Mr. Becker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you, Board members and members that'll be on the committee. My apologies, first off, for not being able to attend, I have family visiting from a little earlier than I expected.
Nice.
Pennsylvania. I've spent nine years on the Board of Selectmen in Webster, having gotten off that in May of '24, chaired for several years, was on the Finance Committee way back when my 30-something year olds were little kids. I think I was three years on there and vice chair. I also served on a number of other boards, including one that is a board between Webster and Dudley, the Southern Western County Communications Center, that handles all the dispatch for both of our police, fire, and EMS departments. So I just, I'm thrilled to be able to give whatever I can give, the information I've learned from municipal side. I worked for Monferray Insurance for coming up on 40 years, so I've got a lot of experience as well on the corporate side. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Can we move forward with the swearing?
She's going to do it outside.
She's going to do it outside?
Yeah.
We should do it now before they get their packet. Madam Town Clerk?
Is it okay to enter?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And Mr. Becker will swing by the Town Clerk this week.
Okay, great. And Mr. Becker will swing by the Town Clerk this week at some point. So we're good with Mr. Becker?
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Becker. We hope that you enjoy your time with your family.
Thanks very much, and I will swing by the Town Clerk sometime this week, as you mentioned.
Good. Good night.
Good night.
Take care, you too.
See you, Randy.
If there's no objections, we'll move on to what will now be number four, citizens' comments. If anybody, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Richard Clark, Yaphort Road. Mr. Sullivan, you got ahead of me a bit. I was going to congratulate Mr. Landry on his having been a member of the Board of Selectmen. It's an often thankless task. I think you've done well, certainly. I know that we probably are on different sides with a number of issues, but I know that somewhere down there, you have Dudley's best interests at heart. And again, thank you for your service, and on many occasions, you have been the best resident member of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Nobody even noticed that tonight.
Anybody else?
Hi, Sandy Lito, 38 West Dudley Road. I just wanted to see if I can make a quick announcement. I'm going to run for Board of Health for the two-year write-in. There's nobody else running for the two-year term other than, there is one other person, so there is an open position for the two-year term. And I thought I'd throw my hat in there. I'm currently the PIP Liaison for the Fish Road Reclamation Project. I will have to hand that off to a different petitioner if I'm elected, which is fine, but I just wanted to say it.
Beautiful, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything they would like to bring up? Hearing seeing none, I'd like to go down to what is now 5A, Master Plan Steering Committee, term to expire 6302026.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Costello has asked to drop her name from consideration.
So this will be mentioned with an additional appointment?
There'll be an additional appointment, yes. This is to form the Steering Committee and make these initial appointments to it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we appoint the following people to the Master Plan Steering Committee, term to expire 6302026. Olivier Entonson, Mark Landry, excuse me, Janet Duchaine, Richard Clark, and thank them all for volunteering.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Again, Mr. Chair, just thank everyone that's stepping up to volunteer, these are important committees, and thank you very much.
Super. Anybody else have anything to say? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous, so voted. Now, we're going down to number six, Public Business. Toll booth request plus backpack guide, Saturday, August 30, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, with rain date of Sunday, August 31, in the area of 3 West Main Street. Is anybody here that would like to come up and speak?
Hi, I'm Lori Joseph, and I'm from the Blessed Backpack Brigade, and we help the homeless and less fortunate in the Webster-Dudley area. We do go beyond that into Connecticut as well. And we're holding a toll booth, that's one of our major fundraisers for the year, and we hope you all drive by and help us out.
Oh, beautiful.
Lori, you know what's on your first one? Everything ran by the chief, you guys not setting up.
Public safety.
Right, sorry.
Do I hear a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the request of the Blessed Backpack Brigade, Saturday, August 30, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, with rain date of Sunday, August 31, in the area of 3 West Main Street.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous, so voted. 6B, permission to hold the blood drives, September 28, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Town Hall Parking Lot. Dudley's Women's Club, do we have anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, do I hear any motions from the Board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I don't know how the rest of the Board feels. We'd like to maybe have somebody come in, have they already met with you, Chief? Public safety?
Yeah, all set.
So you're all set?
As well at my office as well, Mr. Chairman.
I was going to say, if they hadn't met yet, all right. Make a motion to grant the request, unless anybody else has a comment. Make a motion to grant the request on September 28, 2025, from 9:00 to 2:00, Town Hall Parking Lot.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous, so voted. Number 6C, Chairman's Discussion, next step for Waterline, I hand off to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we had some discussion, myself, the Town Administrator, Town Council, and the engineer. So at the risk of calling a special Town Meeting, which would have been a compressed timeline, and based on the questions and concerns that some residents had, it's obviously the Board's pleasure, but the feeling was, we put it off, maybe we need to get more information. I mean, there's people out there, for example, that wanted to know if we could move the dump. Engineer indicated that we could apply for the SRF next year, so hopefully the terms would be the same. And maybe, it almost passed, it wasn't a huge turnout, but there was people there, there was questions. So the feeling that we had in our discussion was not to rush to a special public meeting because it would look like we were trying to, you know, do something nefarious. So I want the Board, with the pleasure of the Board, is I think we put it off, we try for it next year. And again, maybe it's a question of more information, I don't check the logs and people that come in, it didn't appear to me that we had a preponderance of residents in that neighborhood, maybe people couldn't make it, maybe we get more people to show up. I mean, I talked to Kerry, too, individually, and we talked about maybe just getting a price to see if we could move the dump. But the problem with that is, according to the engineer, we move our hazardous material, we have to give it to somebody else, and if the contamination goes with it, somebody else gets contaminated, we're responsible. So I'm not sure if that's a feasible alternative, but that was our general discussion anyway, so I don't know how the Board feels, but I agree with that course of action.
Any discussion, yes?
I did some research, and the last time a meaningful landfill was moved that I could find was in 1958 in Israel, and they referred to it as landfill mining, where they used magnetic devices and filters to take out scrap metal and such, and they just moved everything to a different place. No environmental regulations, nothing whatsoever. I found nothing else that said you could move it. You could do some math and look at what the size of the landfill is, and where the water is, how many feet down is the water, 100 feet, 200 feet, 500 feet? 600. 600 feet. Length times width times depth, what's that? And what are you going to find when you go down? If anyone's ever built a house or drilled a well, you know you find ledge, things of that nature. I can't see us getting a quote, it costs prohibitive, if it can even be done.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
To the Chair, I'd ask the townsfolk to keep reaching out, and if there's ideas you have on how to solve the problem, that's probably what we're in need of, because one way to do that is to bring clean town water to an area that does not have clean water.
Because one way to do that is to bring clean town water to an area that does not have clean water. The math is pretty straightforward, of course, estimated. The math makes sense to bring in the water line. I just, you know, we can answer more questions. And if there's another alternative, because poets don't seem to make sense long-term. So what does make sense? If moving a landfill when there's already poisoned, unknown quantities of unknown chemicals that will be tested in the future, and new levels and new requirements being made, and determining that to be a problem, then that's a whole nother issue, I think. So, you know, if there are ideas on how to solve the problem, that's probably where we should be pointing. If we can answer more questions about this potential solution, that would be great. What I saw at town meeting was a lot of reasons why not to do it, not alternatives other than moving the dump. So, I'm not sure we heard any new ideas. So if we don't have new ideas, how can we move forward with this version or a different version of getting clean water?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything to say?
The only thing that, you know, it's... When we were at town meeting and talking about, you know, alternatives to what was being put forward, I started having questions myself, but unfortunately, I don't have a background in environmental engineering or environmental sciences or anything like that. One of the questions that I know I had was, even if we were to find the funds and move the dump, how long is it going to take for the water tables to recover? How long are we still going to be paying for poet systems on top of the cost to actually move everything and make sure that that's been cleaned? So I just, you know, unfortunately, I kind of agree with Mr. Sigunovich, though I think it would be cost prohibitive to do anything else. But again, I'm trying to keep an open mind because it's not what my specialty is in. It's not my background. And if there is new information that comes forward that, you know, gets us a better roadmap across town and to make sure that that particular neighborhood has clean drinking water, like, I'm all for it. It's just, it's gotta be feasible, and it does have to work within our budget.
Okay. I think we've heard from everybody to move forward with that.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing I would say is that the only... We did have a few discussions about calling us, potentially calling a special town meeting, and it was driven by a June 30th deadline to have the borrowing approved by a town meeting. Otherwise, the $14.2 million for the water line, that loan goes away. So it will go away June 30th. However, there's a July 25th deadline to reapply, and we scored well in the first round to get the loan. So it kind of makes sense that if we are successful, we make that deadline on July 25th to reapply, and the loan is approved, then we would have, from now until the October special, potentially to talk about things like moving the dump and having maybe DEP and our engineers and our LSP talk about why it makes sense or why it doesn't make sense. And we can go down the public information route. I mean, the article itself passed by simple majority and didn't gain two-thirds support by five or six votes. So if it's a matter of providing more information and giving the people in that neighborhood the opportunity to make a more informed vote and maybe come to the meeting and vote for it, or vote against it, but at least come to the meeting, that might help. So I think this is a good course of action.
To reapply by the 25th of July deadline. So we have from that point till October to be discussing this, get the people in, and come up with something. I think that's a great idea. I think we're all on the same page on that.
Absolutely.
We just want to move forward on that. Thought objection?
That'll be the plan, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So now we're gonna go to 6D, which is the Board of Selectmen to vote to approve schedule of meetings for second half of the year or take any other action relative thereto, Madam Clerk.
So, the Board of Selectmen will be meeting on the following dates at the Dudley Municipal Complex, 71 West Main Street, Dudley, 01571, in room 321A, at 6:30 p.m., unless otherwise specified. July 14th, 2025, July 28th, 2025, August 11th, 2025, August 25th, 2025, September 8th, 2025, September 22nd, 2025, October 6th, 2025. A tentative date for a special town meeting of October 20th, 2025. The Board of Selectmen will meet at 6:30 unless otherwise voted or posted on the meeting agenda at Shepherd Hill Regional High School prior to special town meeting. November 3rd, 2025, September 17th, 2025, December 1st, 2025, December 15th, 2025, and December 29th, 2025.
Got a motion? Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept, as read. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous, so voted. 6E will be the Board of Selectmen vote to approve election warrant or take any other action relative thereto annual town election, June 16th, 2025. Does everybody take a look?
Mr. Chairman, this is the usual vote for the Board of Selectmen to call us, but the town election, it's scheduled on a date you mentioned, and it requires a vote and signature of the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept and sign the warrant, election warrant as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
All abstained.
411, abstention. So voted. While we're doing that, the next, we're gonna go right down to number six, Departmental Communications. We'll go with Fire Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Couple things. I don't know if I mentioned this last time. We took delivery of our new fire truck a few weeks ago. It's at the station. I just got the plates for it. It should be in service in a few weeks. That was the one that was approved two years ago. They just finished it. Also, we took delivery of our new pickup truck last week, which was received on a grant, 100% grant through Homeland Security for $75,000. Cost the townspeople zero. So that's replacing a 2011 pickup truck, and that's all I have.
Beautiful. Anybody have anything for the chief?
Chief, great job with the CPR class. Couple of us attended. Well done, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, the Town Accountant.
Good evening. I am pleased to announce that April is basically closed, and we are beginning work on May as far as posting cash and reconciling the accounts. So caught up in good time because we received the DLS year-end letter today with instructions on the procedures to close the books moving forward. So everything's shifting towards year-end and the work we have to do there. So...
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
That was beautiful. Police Chief?
Just real quick, just a quick update on the construction. The paving was, I believe, finished today by Dippin' Donuts, so hopefully the traffic won't be affected like it was for the last two days of paving, the intersection by the Dudley Golf Course. There was some confusion with the stop sign. I posted something on our Facebook to kind of... Yeah, the design of the intersection has changed, so hopefully people pay attention to that stop sign. I think once the construction is done and the road is marked up, I think people will get a better idea of that intersection. And also, one of our officers just recently passed the tryouts for the SWAT team. And we haven't had an officer on the regional SWAT team in a good number of years. So I congratulate one of our officers for making that. It was a lot of work on his behalf to make that. So he's gonna be part of a regional SWAT team from our department. And last but not least, I'm gonna be, I'm still shorthanded. I'm still trying to fill that position that was vacant since March. I think the next step is we're gonna try the entry level. So keep an eye out. If you're interested in becoming a police officer in the town of Dudley and you're a town resident, I strongly encourage you to keep an eye out. And there'll be some more information coming out about that. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, sir. Next, Treasury Collector.
Good evening. Internally, we have our department head meeting tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. in this room. This would be the first week we're taking deductions for the new health insurance, which means we've had an open enrollment. We've closed the open enrollment and always have a Medicare issue. Lot of compliance. This year was the same as the other one. We're sending out the pink bills, which means if you haven't paid your real estate, you're gonna get a visit from the unhappy mailman who's delivering all of the past due bills. Can't really speak to the water and sewer shut-off notices. I will say, happy to take all of those payments. The water and sewer shut-off notices originated outside of the office, but we're happy to get those processed and the information over to the water and sewer. I'll echo what Sarah's saying as far as year-end. Making sure that everything is done by June 30th. We've paid our last debt. We're gonna be paying our last health insurance invoice, so on and so forth. Again, hopefully, it's a pretty clean cutoff. Also, we'd be printing bills for fiscal '26, and don't imagine I'd ever say that considering you start in '02. But those bills are gonna be out on their way, so there might be some crisscross. Remember, the demand bills that come out are a little bit different than previously, and it has a lot to do with the passage of a tax title reformation. So if somebody receives a bill and there's a question on it, there's information for the Treasury Collector, there's information for the Assessor. We want to avoid any wrong takings or anything like that, but we'll get to that bridge when we cross it. Thought Sarah might have covered this. The DLS had their training for two consecutive Wednesdays over in Westford. At a later date, I'm sure she's going to point out a few items that are excellent points moving forward. I had another Wednesday, this past Wednesday, we had a payroll boot camp. It seems there is a need for, you know, how to manually calculate a payroll. So I was invited to that event, and that was over at the Milford Town Hall. So not a bad thing. You had three MCTA past presidents teaching. So if there's any questions, of course. Appreciate everybody stepping forward for both the Steering Committee and the Government Study Committee. Mr. Landry, congratulations. Hope this is a strong meeting for you, and wish you well in the next chapter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Want to sue?
Since the shut-off notices were mentioned by the previous speaker, to speak briefly to that. That policy was on the books for our department 20 years ago. We, it went dormant. We didn't really use it much. We depended mostly on dumping it to the tax, to your property tax every year. But when it became apparent that we were running in the area of $200,000 a year of unpaid bills, we just thought that that was grossly unfair to those ratepayers that were paying their bills on time. So we resurrected, rewrote it, made it more modern, and then we reenacted it with the first of the year. So it's unfortunate that we have to do that kind of thing, but that sort of money is, $200,000 is just, it was between $170,000 and $200,000 each year. And that's, we just can't carry that kind of debt, basically. That's, it's just, we'll work with anyone who needs assistance in trying to get caught up, but it is what it is. It's unfortunate, but we just have to do what we have to do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other depart...? Okay.
And our next meeting is this Wednesday night in this room. So you can spend three nights in a row in this room if you so choose.
That's a dream. Anybody else want to come up and speak on behalf of any other department? Seeing no one, like to go to number seven, eight. Let's go to the Town Administrator's Report. Town Administrator's Evaluation, Board of Selectmen provides ratings, feedback, final rating of TA Performance Appraisal, Fisk year '25. Clerk Tally scores and provides overall ratings with approval vote of Board of Selectmen or any other action relative thereto. And without objection, due to time, I would recommend that we do the number ratings for Section 1 and 3 and hold discussions for Section 2, which are objectives and goals. Hearing none. Like to move forward with the Town Administrator's Evaluation.
Mr. Chair, we're gonna do what we did historically. We'll have, give their score. Boyd Clark will tabulate and then present us with the overall grade and the math.
Right. Nonetheless needed, only have discussion on Section 2.
So, just to, before we dive in, just a quick reminder. The grading metric, the rating scale is a 1 through 4. Unsatisfactory, below expectations, meets expectations, and exceeds expectations. A 3 is not a bad thing. A meets expectations is not a bad thing. It just means that the job is being done. So with that said, our first metric is overseas and is responsible for, so this is in Section Part 1, Job Duties. Overseas and is responsible for the planning, administration, personnel management, procurement of services and equipment as the town's chief procurement officer, public records officer, municipal hearing officer, and sexual harassment officer, as provided by Massachusetts General Laws. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, responsible for the coordination of the daily operation of the town and the requirements in accordance with town policies, procedures, bylaws, state, and federal laws. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
And on that, I have a 4.
Mr. Sullivan?
Well...
Mr. Johnson?
Exceeds. He wears many hats and does it very well.
And Mr. Sigunovich?
3.
Next up, 2. Provides leadership and direction in development of short and long-range plans. Provides for the gathering, interprets, and prepares data for studies, reports, and recommendations. Provides professional advice to the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, other town boards, committees, local officials, and department heads. Makes presentations to the Board of Selectmen, town boards and committees, state agencies, town meeting, and the general public. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
Exceeds.
And Mr. Sigunovich?
3.
Okay, next up, attends all meetings of the Board of Selectmen. Receives and makes appropriate disposition or referral of all selection correspondence and communications. Anticipates needs of the Board of Selectmen for information and back... Anticipates needs of the Board of Selectmen for information and background material. Ensures that all decisions of the Board of Selectmen are carried out. Keeps the Board of Selectmen fully advised regarding departmental operations and the financial status of the town. I have a 4. Mr. Landry.
4.
Mr. Sullivan.
Excuse me, floor?
Mr. Johnson.
4, I'll tell you why. John is almost always present and prepared, which is the more important part. Keeps him informed and educated. We all have different backgrounds and experience models, so that's probably the more difficult part. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
4. Oversees the permit and licensing procedures of the Board of Selectmen. I have a 4. All permit and licensing procedural questions are answered fully and accurately. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
3.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Step 5. Establishes goals, objectives, and recommends the adoption and oversees the implementation of town policies based on the needs of the town. Provides supervision, direction, and guidance, including regular communication and development of goals and objectives for all town staff and reporting department heads. Assists all departments of the town in any administrative or operational areas to ensure regulatory, statutory, or procedural compliance. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4, and I'd like to just add my comment. All town boards, I underline, capitalize emphasis, comes to the TA. Even the positions that do not report to the Board of Selectmen or TA, he's always available to give guidance and direction.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
Okay, 6. Establishes and oversees operating and capital budget process from developing instructions and setting deadlines to providing materials and recommendations for appropriations and capital planning reviews. Coordinates the development of strategic financial goals for the town. Makes recommendations concerning financial policies and practices. Reviews all revenue collected and makes recommendations concerning fees, charges, and enterprise fund rates as well as new sources of revenue. I have a 4. Mr. Ruda has spent the past year meeting regularly with the finance team in service of making budget season and financial operations a more consistent focus. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Okay, 7. Participates on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in all collective bargaining, hiring of town employees, implementation of the classification and compensation plans, and negotiation of employment contracts with labor council. Develops and recommends bargaining concepts and strategies for Board of Selectmen's approval. Attends all bargaining sessions and/or grievance hearings. Advises officials on the impact of contract terms on the personnel system, classification of positions, and wage administration. Works with town council to shape and implement responses to all legal issues impacting the town. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
I have a 4, and the TA is 100% represents the Board of Selectmen on negotiations.
Mr. Johnson?
3.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Number 8. Consults with department heads, board and committee members, and employees of every rank in the town's employment on sensitive issues involving performance problems, health issues, management styles, contract interpretation, leave and attendance, and job assignments. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
3. Performance discussions are very difficult, especially when some of them have impacts on or influence from departments, not necessarily within the town administration's control. So it's not the easiest thing to do and something I think most leaders and managers try to get better at.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
Number 9. Serves as the Board of Selectmen's liaison and public information officer to town boards or committees, local, statewide, intermunicipal, regional, and federal agencies. Negotiates with citizens and other outside public and private agencies. Assists citizens in their interaction with all town departments, Board of Selectmen, and committees in the delivery of town services and FEMA emergency management requirements. Response to oral and written inquiries, requests for assistance and complaints. Refer citizens to appropriate departments and staff members. Investigates complaints from a variety of sources. Develops responses and, when appropriate, directs corrective action. I have a 3. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
I have a 3, and I also just had the reason for the 3. I know it says evaluation, but we can all improve on interaction with the public, including the TA.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
All right, number 10. Prepares and writes town meeting warrants and motions. Develops, writes, and compiles background materials for town meetings. Works directly with town council and bond council for review of warrant articles. Provides motion for FAA and the Board of Selectmen and oversees review of departmental-sponsored articles. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Number 11. Overseeing all town automated management information systems. Makes recommendations for improvements and implements appropriate policies relative to systems. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
Number 12. Oversees the coordination and compilation of annual town reports, annual licenses, and appointments to boards and committees and employment with the town. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
And Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
13. Serves as town constable. Serves as notary public and commissioner to qualified public officers. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
3.
And Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
14. Conducts independent research and prepares and submits reports to the Board of Selectmen as well as state or federal agencies as required. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
Number 15. Acts as the liaison and represents the Board of Selectmen before town, state, federal, and regional authorities. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Number 16. May be required to attend training programs or seminars in order to stay abreast of changes in municipal laws, regulations, or policies that pertain to the management of local government in Massachusetts. I have a 3. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
I have a 4, and he attends all his relevant training. As a matter of fact, as chair the last year, there were several times he invited me to go along with him, but I wasn't able.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
And last but not least, in Part 1. Number 17 is the town's chief public information officer. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4, I think this is one of the more difficult parts.
And Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
Great, so we are going to jump down to Part 3. Competencies. So the first competency is listed as leadership. Assumes responsibility for directing and coordinating activities of others. Gains respect and confidence. Stimulates the best efforts of others in accomplishment of goals. Selects in the science test in accordance with the development needs of direct reports. Creates a motivating work climate, fosters teamwork. I have exceeds or 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
3.
And Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Great, number 2. Control and follow-up. Measures the accomplishment of goals and objectives. Uses performance standards to provide evaluation and feedback. I have a 3. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
3. Organizing and planning. Demonstrates the ability to plan, to establish priorities and set goals, and to structure assignments. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
Number 4. Judgment. Uses logic and sound reasoning to generate, evaluate, and choose courses of action. This prefers quality of decisions rather than quantity or timeliness. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Decisiveness. Makes timely decisions and acts. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
Cooperation. Works harmoniously with others to complete assignments. Respond positively to requests, instructions, and policies and procedures. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
3.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Interpersonal. Shows sensitivity to and recognition of the needs and feelings of others. Develops rapport and trust. Deals effectively with others at all levels. I have a 3. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
3.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
Reliability. Assumes responsibility for and can be depended upon to complete assignments. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Flexibility. Alterns plans and behavior in response to changes in the situation. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Written communication. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
5. If I could, 4.
Oral communication. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
3.
And budget and cost control. Prepares and administers operating and capital budgets. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
4.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
And Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Okay, great. All right, to go back to Part 2, objectives. We had four goals set for this year. Starting with fiscal management. With the goal of successfully establishing, developing, and managing the town's budgeting process, the following performance objectives have been established. The town administrator has balanced annual and supplemental budget recommendations substantially complete at the time of budget meetings. The town administrator is able to explain recommendations and acceptively answer questions asked by the Board of Selectmen, FAA, and other stakeholders, including town meeting, at the time of recommendation. The town administrator budget recommendations accurately reflect the public policy and spending priorities of the Board of Selectmen as represented through board votes, actions, and voted policies. Department heads are made aware of those priorities and the strategic financial goals of the town as part of the budgeting process. A specific timeline is established for budget preparation and distributed to appropriate department heads, boards, commissions, and committees. Deadlines are set to provide materials and recommendations for FAA and CIC reviews. Finally, the town administrator is able to demonstrate his ability to adapt to unforeseen changes in his budget recommendations throughout the course of the fiscal year. I have a 4. The budget is always well-balanced and well-communicated, especially in this past year. While there may not have been support in the community for some of the financial initiatives that we championed this year, they were always put forward with the board's support and the best interests of the town at heart. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
I gave him a 4, and I put exceeds. These budgets based on the numbers provided by the financial people. I just used, for example, the treasurer who was the CFO. And as they change them, they're provided by the officials.
Mr. Johnson?
4.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4.
Next up. We have fiscal year '25 revenues derived from other sources. With the goal of establishing other sources of funding outside of local taxation, the following performance objectives have been established. The town administrator can demonstrate by regular and public reporting that he is taking an active and leading role in securing grants, earmarks, and other sources of funding, payments, or agreements that are not derived from the local tax base. The town administrator is able to or has demonstrated over the course of fiscal year '25 that any success in securing funding described above supports the Board of Selectmen's public goals that include but are not limited to public health, safety, and security, compliance and regulatory requirements, quality of life, and employee training, technology upgrades, and enhanced and improved citizen services. I have a 4. Mr. Landry?
4.
Mr. Sullivan?
I also have a 4.
Mr. Johnson?
4. So just the comment, just the grants alone is key to having a budget where we can meet some regulatory needs and the goals of the townspeople and the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Sigenovich?
4. He got so many grants that town meeting voters didn't want some of them.
Madam Chair, I may also...
Yes.
I meant to bring this up. I had a document printed up by the ATA who got it from the town accountant entitled Ledger History, Allocated Trial Balance Revenue Ledger. Some of the bigger ones. $600,000 for the design of the water line. Is a $250,000, excess of $250,000 grant from National Grid addressed to Hill and Northwest Schoolhouse Road where our highway department did work and was compensated from National Grid. $47,000 you get from Greater Media.[1562.86] There was another big one on here that was highlighted. Mass Works Infrastructure Grant of 2.5 million. $5,000 fiscal '24, the rest is in fiscal year '25. And when you add those totals up, they exceed 3 million, just, just those grants that I highlighted, highlighted for me. That Mr. Ruda sought and received for the town. So there's no doubt he exceeds that category. I have a whole list of other, but that was the most important. Thank you for letting me speak.
So moving on to number three, communication with the Board of Selectmen. With the goal of keeping the Board of Selectmen current with information, opinions and facts needed for them, the board, for, for the board to make informed policy decisions and deciding votes, the town administrator's objectives are responding to and initiating improved communication efforts, recognizing that any issue or change that directly or significantly impacts the community falls within the Board of Selectmen's authority to provide feedback, allowing the Board of Selectmen the opportunity to provide feedback on policy initiatives and changes before implementation, involving the Board of Selectmen in the determination of collective bargaining strategies for the current contract process and keeping Selectmen up to date on its progress and ensuring that all Selectmen are aware of anything significant before it appears in the newspaper. I have a very enthusiastic four on this. Mr. Ruda takes the on-call nature of his position very seriously. He's always available to discuss town matters during the workday and outside of it, regardless of whether the inquiry is emergent in nature. There have been several town emergencies that he has provided information to the board very quickly and accurately. And both of those things are so important. He's very skillful at reviewing information at face value and then following that information to sound conclusions that meet compliance requirements. And then he shares that information freely with the board. Mr. Landry.
Four.
Mr. Sullivan.
Four.
Mr. Johnson.
Four, apologize for the after-hours conversations on my long commute, so. I apologize for lunchtime I was calling at.
Mr. Sigenovich.
You're not the only one calling at my lunchtime sometimes. Four, if, if I don't have what I need, he's easy to find.
And then finally, human resource management and leadership. With the goal of recruiting, maintaining, coaching and leading town staff, the following performance objectives have been developed. The town administrator models sound personnel procedures and practices in oversight of human resources functions. Leads, directs and develops reporting town hall staff. Develops good staff morale and loyalty to the town. Recruits and assigns the best available personnel in terms of their competencies. Leads the negotiations of labor contracts representing town interests and board guidelines. Coaches and expects that an attitude and feeling of helpfulness, courtesy and sensitivity to public perception exists in employees meeting the public. Represents the town to media as chief public relations office, chief public relations spokesperson on town government issues and maintains awareness of developments and plans in, in other jurisdictions. I have a four. Mr. Ruda conducts regular staff meetings with department heads and makes himself available to members of every board. Several sensitive issues have come up in the last year and he has not tried away to collaborate with department heads and various boards to provide them with sound advice or to connect them with town legal counsel where necessary. In addition, he works tirelessly to update town policies while balancing employees, compliance and what is best for the town. Mr. Landry.
Four.
Mr. Sullivan.
I also gave him a four with sidebar of the town administrator. Bylaw is followed and since some of this was personnel, his oversight, they put the town administrator and the assistant town administrator by extension ensures compliance.
Mr. Johnson.
Three, this is some of the toughest work that, that happens in town.
Mr. Sigenovich.
Three.
Okay, and through the chair, we said we were going to dispense with comments tonight in the interest of town?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. So with all of that said, the subtotals. Mr. Ruda's total performance rating is exceeds expectation overall. He earned an exceeds expectations in part one, part two and part three based on the scores that were collected tonight.
Outstanding. Does anybody have any comments?
You know, Mr. Chair, it's, it's hard to evaluate someone in public. A lot of people wouldn't have the temerity to go through it. We have to do it by law, but it's also part of transparency for the town people to see how we feel about what the town administrator provides to us and by extension the town on a day-to-day basis, hour-to-hour sometimes. And I think what we just did was a fair and accurate representation of the work that Jonathan Ruda has given to the town for the last, last year.
Very good. Anyone else? Hearing that, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the rating approval. Do we have any discussion?
Just like to thank the board for the continued support that they show me and confidence that they have in me and I consistently am hotter on myself in terms of rating my own performance than the five of you are, so I appreciate it.
Very good, very good. Anything else with anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? So voted? Board member comments? Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chair, I just want to publicly thank yourself as a veteran on Memorial Day. I was unable to attend this year due to a family obligation for my wife and her family. Definitely miss it. I enjoy the interaction, excuse me, interaction with the veterans and the public, but I want to thank everyone that turned out. I heard it was a pretty good turnout on the sides of the road. And it can't be much, I can't think of a much more important day for someone to show pride in their community and the, and the people that made the ultimate sacrifice.
Thank you. Madam Clark.
Two things. First of all, I just want to say congratulations to all of the 2025 graduates. The Shepherd Hill graduation was yesterday. And I was fortunate enough to attend as a representative for one of the scholarships that was being awarded to four very deserving students. But I know that obviously it's not just Shepherd Hill. Are, we have students in a lot of private schools that go to Bay Path and completing high school is a huge, huge accomplishment. There are very high like stop-out and dropout rates unfortunately, even for, for high schools. So seeing all of those 270 graduates yesterday was, was really kind of incredible. And I just wanted to say congratulations to them. Also, you will be sorely missed, Mr. Landry. I've really enjoyed this first year on the board to have you kind of like coaching a little bit and to throw an entire manual at me at the first day. It was, it was a good thing. Like, I very much appreciated that.
Good.
So thank you so much and I hope that, it's a lot less stress going forward for you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Johnson.
Fantastic is what I'd say about that. Thank you, Mr. Landry, for all your hard work, your attention to detail and understanding some of the issues and bringing your experience. We learned a lot about some, some key topics that with your years of experience in those areas, it was, it was very helpful not having seen that stuff. Secondly, thinking about Paul Joseph, I was lucky enough to sit next to him for three years. Learned quite a bit from Mr. Joseph. Not much of it stuck unfortunately. But he was a wealth of knowledge and knew the town, knew the people and knew the procedures better than, better than most. I told Lori that, at the wake and KJ. He was, he was a force to be reckoned with.
Beautiful, beautiful, thank you. An outstanding job. Mr. Sigenovich.
Mr. Johnson, thank you for leaving outstanding for me. You, you certainly went to the beat of your own drum. No emotion, just the facts. And like, like Mr. Johnson said, you had your, your areas of expertise and when those came up, you stood up and you were heard. You, you had a great term in, in everything else you do. You're a, you're a fixture here. You did a lot of things that people don't know about. Class act, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Paul Joseph, fun fact, 10 years I bought a house right next door to Paul Joseph. And first day moving in, he offered his home to me if ever we ran out of power because he had a gas furnace, so. Although he might have been a tough guy here, he, that man had a heart of gold. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job, everybody. It was an honor serving with all of you. It was fun sometimes. But it, it's definitely an eye-opener and you definitely learn a lot from a lot of great people, a lot of smart people that really have their hearts in the right place to get things done. And we can't forget the people that we serve and how to serve them. And I appreciate that. And keeping it short, I'd like to move to executive session. Adjournment, board moves into executive session in accordance with general law, chapter 30A subsection 21. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation if an open meeting may discuss. May have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares remka litigation, Hanan MCAD case, DPA. And purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, public records law, attorney-client privileged communication. And purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements to reconvene in open session if required to vote, otherwise not to reconvene and adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Steve Sullivan, aye.
Kerry Sigenovich, aye.
Janet Deschaine, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Mark Landry, aye. Thank you, everybody.